Great, great, thanks everyone. Welcome, I'd like to call this special meeting of the Bethel Board of Select to order for Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. And please join me and Clint Leggins. Okay, first order of business is the Selectment Report. We don't have public comment, I don't think there's a special meeting, but let me just cover a couple of things. This is mostly in the area of operations, but something we've been working on for the last year really, and is coming to fruition is that our newly revamped town website has actually launched. We didn't make a big announcement about it because we wanted to make sure that the, you know, that any bugs were caught by the smallest number of people possible, you know, to avoid embarrassment, and there were a few, nothing serious. But it is, if you just search the town of Bethel website, you will see a very different format than what we've had before. And did you, did you make me a co-host?
Yes.
Let me, let me just bring this up really quickly. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen. You can take a look at, take a look at what this, what this is like. So you'll, you'll notice there's some differences right away. Pictures are a little bit different. Important things right now that we still have a COVID-19 link that shows you where to get tests, where to get vaccines, how to get information, what the latest statistics are. That takes you to the Bethel page and that on COVID-19, and that will take you to the state page too, if you wanna, if you wanna take a look at that. But if you, when you're done looking at that, you click that little thing, and by the way, that red banner can change, you know. So when we're done with COVID, if there's any other kind of emergency, you will find that that is very flexible and we can tailor the emergency notices for anything that might be going on, police, fire, natural disasters, whatever. Notice the beautiful photography, I did that myself, some of it. No copyright, but here's the biggest change. The old website used to require that you kind of know what you're looking for and how to find it. So you want to go find a dog license, you know, how do I do that? Or you want to find recycling information, you kind of had to go, you'd say, all right, I have to go to the town clerk to get this, or I have to go to the building department to get that. The fine thing lets you do things like find dog licenses, voter registration by function, and there's more to that too. Same with, with pay, pay taxes, pay utility bill, apply for jobs, apply for building permits. So a lot of this stuff is much easier to navigate and find, and then of course we have the news. You can sign up for the electronic newsletter. We have over fifteen hundred, about fifteen hundred people that have signed up for the electronic newsletter, and that grows all the time. And we're, we're reaching a lot more people than we used to. It also links to our social media page. Down here we have, if, if people don't notice this, because you know, there's a lot of different websites out there, we have some very direct things, Zoom documents for meetings, the current town budget. Again, these things were picked up from traffic from the website, so we know, you know, from, from statistics exactly what people are looking for. The, the meeting archive is, is down here. This will take you to the YouTube archives, so you can look up any of the meetings that are recorded. Meetings coming up, town meetings, board select meetings, this is all linked with the calendar. Here's the emergency alert, alert system. This is the Everbridge system that you could sign up for and opt in, and then here's the email newsletter signup. Here's something kind of cool, we're, we're linking over for recycling business right now. HRA, which we're a member, has composted and rain barrel sale. You can get these things for cheap through HRA, so we'll be linking that over. This is part of our sustainability effort. And then, you know, there's some other enhancements coming too. One of the biggest ones that we're working on is we're going to be linking a system called Civic Clerk. What this does, well, right now if you go to look for agendas and minutes online, what you get is a picture, you know, it's a PDF picture. And you can find it, you can read it, but it's not searchable, it's not searchable the way the Word document is. When we have Civic Clerk up in a couple of months, all agendas will be built online and automatically linked to the calendar in the archive, and it will be linked to a Word search function. So you can, you want to find something by topic, like when did we have that board selective meeting or the board finance meeting where we talked about websites? You know, how much did we spend on that or whatever? You'll be able to do a search on that, and it will take you right to the, to the item. The, the meeting minutes will also be generated directly from the agendas. They will be posted automatically online. So every once in a while you may notice that somebody, somewhere misfiles a PDF and we go look for our minutes and it's not in the board select file. It got accidentally put someplace else. That won't be able to happen because every, all sets of agendas will be custom, will be standardized on the same template and automatically uploaded to the correct file. So it's a huge step into the 21st century, yes.
And the video of the meetings will be automatically linked to the.
That's right, yeah, exactly to the, I'm glad you brought that up. We were, will also as part of this be changing the video feed, because right now this, this meeting is being recorded and going onto a YouTube channel, and we've had some problems with that. In fact, we had a board of, I don't know if you guys even noticed, but we had a board of finance meeting a couple of months ago that was actually blocked and taken off, taken down from YouTube because somebody in the world, we don't know where, made a mistake. They had, they were using some software that looks for copyright violations. Somebody in the meeting said something that sounded like a speech that was made on a TED Talk in some city, and they, they, the software deemed that a copyright violation. So they removed our whole meeting from the YouTube file, you couldn't watch it. And I don't know that it actually, it's ever been fixed. There was also, I know the town of Brookfield does the same thing. They had somebody attend a board of education meeting and they made a statement about vaccines that was untrue. So YouTube removed that whole video and blocked it as being vaccine-related misinformation. So it, it really, so really what we need is, we, we have to have a, a channel that allows us to post what happens in a meeting. So that will be added to the system in the near future too, as we roll it out. But next week we're going to make a general announcement about how this new system operates. But very excited about that. It's, it's working very well. So I'm gonna stop, stop sharing that screen now and cover a couple other things. Municity, the new online permitting system that we rolled out last January, now covers the building department, health department, or land use department, and it is being rolled out this week to the health department. Their fee schedule has been uploaded, and over the next two weeks they'll be getting training on, on how to operate that system. Eventually what this is going to do is eliminate all the paper. And, and we've already rolled out the system internally to our building maintenance department. They're using tablets like the one on my, on my desk. So rather than take a work order and write down a piece of paper and then give it to Kathy Galvis and then has to put it in the computer, work orders will be performed in the field. They'll be recorded, the time spent could be allocated. Any materials that needed to be purchased could be assigned to it, and this will give us a much, much better idea of cost control when we're planning, when we're doing budget planning. As part of the ARBA program to be, which is going to be discussed in greater detail later on tonight, we are also in the process of seeking vendors to provide digitization services. Because as we move into these new systems like the online permitting, which it, by the way, is literally keeping that department afloat because of the massive increase in workload. When we, when we move into the digitization process, of course, the new system is, from this point on, is not creating new papers, creating digital files, but we need to go back and scan the older records and, and get that stuff stored electronically too. So those are the big things that, before I close my first Selectment Report, I just want to express a great deal of gratitude to all the folks who ran for office, campaigned for those who ran for office, who put up the signs, for those who put their names on a ballot. This is, in many respects, this is a very difficult and challenging time to do that, you know, exposes yourself, even at the local level sometimes to some, some unpleasant things and some unpleasant attitudes, which is very unfortunate, and I hope our, our nation moves beyond that. But I think Bethel has been a real beacon of civility by comparison to some other towns. But great deal of appreciation to all who ran and congratulations to those who won seats and, you know, best of luck in serving the public. Really is no greater honor than doing that for your community, so wish them all the best. So that's the substance of my report. Want to open up the floor to my colleagues, if you guys have anything to add or any questions? Oh, well. You're gonna have to go by memory here. The water test on, water test on the outside of the building that has been coated with the plastic air coating has worked. They did find a couple of the problems, which have been addressed several, several days this week. They set up work, work groups. There was flashing around the top that was, that was leaking a little bit. There was a tiny gap that was still, personally, I'm very confident that they, they've got, they've gotten down to the last couple of problems. And what I'll do is, I'll have the chair of the committee come and give us another form of. They could, they don't have one scheduled, you know?
They were going to schedule another one after they get all the.
Because we discussed this in the last meeting, and you made a request to go to the next water test. So I reached out to Nancy Ryan, like I asked. I reached out on the 21st. She said that the last water test had been conducted on Monday, October 18th, and that she would let us know when the next one was scheduled. So she is aware that he wants to get the evidence.
All right, any other questions? All right. Moving on, next order of business is consideration of the regular meeting minutes of October 19th. Don't entertain a motion to accept. All right, any, any questions, any comments? Any corrections? All right, those in favor, say a five by saying aye. That carries. Item number four, consideration of Firematic Supply Company quote, request from Stony Hill Fire for, let's see what we have here, we have a couple of things. But this is for hydraulic cutters and spreaders and battery systems, correct?
That's correct.
And this is, this was, this was approved by the fire commission at their last minute, I believe. This should be in your packet, and this is a request to purchase these items. One cutter, no, two, yeah, one.
One cutter, one spreader, one ram, and batteries and charger for the, each of the tools.
Okay, and this is the amount of forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. So I'll put a motion on the floor to open for discussion that we approve an amount not to, not to exceed forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to purchase the hydraulic items requested to be paid from current year capital non-recurring budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so floor is open, if you have questions for Chief Baker?
I was being a member of the fire commission, Bethel had, I had the same tool. They brought it up to show the commission what it was, and it's basically replacing the old hydraulic system that's tethered to the truck. I think it's a hundred foot hose.
Right, each of, each of it has a hundred foot reel.
They're, they're batter-operated, they can carry them wherever they need. The other jaws of life are starting to wear out, and this is a replacement of it.
That's, that's, the old one, it's how many years old?
Year, years. I have documentation of five of the tools that we have that are obsolete, that can't even be repaired if they can break.
And I tell you, I try to pick it up, it's almost a two-man tool unless you're a big guy.
I mean, the nice thing about it is the, the tool is not really much heavier or lighter than the current tools that we have. But again, the big thing like you had mentioned is, is you're not tethered to a hose line, whether it's on the truck or if it is farther than the truck could reach. Now you have to take a, basically a, a portable engine, which would have the hydraulic reservoir in it to, to power the tools. And the nice thing about the tool is, is if the battery is installed in the tool, it's kind of like your, your cordless drills at home, you put a battery on it and it's ready to go. With the current hydraulic system and the hose lines, you have to put the truck into a PTO mode, make sure the circuit breakers are turned on and the pump is turning, then you have to actually put the pressurized flow of the hydraulic to, to the tool, and it, it slows down the process. And, you know, one second's count when somebody's injured in a vehicle. It, it's a much better system now with getting these new tools. Yeah, we're going to keep the tools as long as they're, they're still functional. But as a backup, correct.
Okay, any further questions? All right, hearing those in favor, say a five by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. Item number five, consider, this is a request from Bethel Fire Department. This is a request of fourteen sets of turnout gear, the amount of, well, I have a discrepancy, fourteen sets, correct, Chief?
Yes, he finally gave us a set paperwork that you all have. Okay, so it's, the total price is forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four. So it's a hundred and twenty-six dollars for the last one.
Okay, forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four. So again, to open the floor for discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for fourteen sets of turnout gear from Northeast Rescue Systems for Bethel Fire Department not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars to be paid from current year capital non-recurring. Second by four. Okay, floor is open, before we, let me, let me just ask a question. I know that Dion was, was looking for, for data. I know you, you must have had to call the company quite a few times to finally get the paperwork.
I got it.
So I appreciate your, your diligence on that. I noticed they just, they gave you a quote just for one set, so we could do the math on it. But is there any, is there any volume savings for buying fourteen sets at one time?
There may be with, we're looking at a second vendor. Okay, you may be able to get a lot cheaper. So if that happens, I would of course come back and tell you what the cost is.
Okay, well, just as a, as a word of, you know, proper teamwork and helping each other out, if, if you can get the companies to provide those quotes on the front end and come in with the, with the material, that would help us out a great deal. Because I, you know, I, I know we have a board of finance that will kick back anything that's not thoroughly researched, and we're kind of in the middle of that too. So would you prefer to get those quotes first?
By the time that I go to the board of finance, I'll have a brand-new set that I can show them exactly what the gear is. The issue with the other vendor is, the other vendor, New York State, which should hopefully be substantially lower, which you know, since I took over, has a very short price. Because it's that fair money that we're spending. So we need to get the best possible prices out there to get. What's the urgency of these? Urgency is that we've got a huge influx of membership, and we have to provide gear, this type of gear, to every certified firefighter that is superior qualified. Very gear and church chief baker that's found in this with me, and OSHA comes in, it's a big problem. It's, you gotta provide it.
And what the plan was, you know, we had this discussion at the fire commission, is that the older members get the new gear and they pass down the older gear to the new members.
Right.
Just because, you know, that they don't want to fit something to somebody and they decided they don't want the fireman anymore, so they stepped down the equipment.
Okay, the, the standard is the gear is ten years. Ten years, and you can no longer use it for structural firefighting. So as I explained at the commission meeting, we have some gear, and you do two sets for every firefighter. Because obviously when you go out and you get exposed, those products of combustion, and it's wet and it's dirty when you come back, you gotta have a second set that's dry and clean, because you have to clean that set before you wear it again. You're not supposed to wear that set again until it's clean. That's why both departments have an extractor washing machine and a dryer, a special dryer for the gear that's specifically just for here, firefighting here. So what I explained was that I have summary now that I'm replacing the second sets for firefighters currently, and I'm taking those sets back or inspecting it and issuing that to the new people because it's got about two years of life left on it, which should get them through firefighter one, and maybe even firefighter two, we're hoping. Where we're using gear that's going to expire, that's older, that if something really happens to it, you pretty much got to wipe out it. If I issued a brand-new gear, something happens to it, you're out of luck. You're gonna buy another set. And the other thing is, I want to make sure that people coming in the door are actually going to stay before they get a brand-new set of gear on the tax rate.
What's the longevity of that?
The gear, the gear is ten years. Ten years, and, and there's nothing Chief Baker and I can do about it. Ten years and it's done. You can use it for exterior things, but you cannot use it for structural firefighting at all. It's just like the GEMtor harnesses we have that go on the outside of the gear on the pants. You see those harnesses we all wear? Those are five years. And then you, you literally have to take them off and give everybody a new harness. If you don't, like I said, and something happens, one, something happens, or two, you just have a routine inspection where OSHA comes in, that's a violation, times however many you have. We're very strict on that, very strict.
So do you have enough gear to go around right now for the training class or no?
We, we were able to borrow some.
You, you were.
Borrowed equipment. Where, where, yeah, we, we had to borrow some for the current class. Now that we have now, we're running a second firefighter one class since I took over on our second class, which, as you know, I explained to you, that hasn't happened in probably twenty, twenty-five years at Bethel Fire. Yeah, so we're running them internally, and that's great because it's saving money, and our people are learning on our equipment. And we have people from surrounding towns that are coming in to these classes also. So it's great because all of our instructors are working for free. They're not filling the town about money. So all I'm paying for right now is some food and drink and some supplies, which is a heck of a lot cheaper than paying twelve, twelve-hundred, fourteen-hundred, plus testing, plus books. We bought books and our re-instructor suggested that we should take the books and not write in the books. So they're not writing in the books because if you write in the book, you're done. But the books have a, have a lifespan of four years, and then they, they would come out with another edition. So those books that we just bought, beginning of this year, for another three and a half years, before we have to replace them with the next edition. So again, we're trying to stretch the dollar there. And that's, that's been my, my whole mission as they took over with. Let's stretch the dollar, let's get the needed equipment, but let's stretch it as far as we can.
Yeah.
I have a question. I don't see it in the capital non-recurring budget. Holding a replacement or, or new clothes. Did you have anything in your regular budget for clothing?
I, I have gear coming in that was just shipped today that comes out of the regular budget. And I typically, I guess typically it's been six sets, I believe Chief Baker said it was eight sets a year. So I may be looking to buy eight sets a year in the next budget cycle. My other issue is, we also found out from the vendor today that as of January one, which isn't typical, they're going up. And it's going up ten percent, which is a huge hike. And there's no guarantee that it won't go up again in the new budget season in July. So, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. I just know that he was honest with us and said, hey, you're gonna buy it, you should buy it now because it's going to go up ten percent in January, January one, it's long.
Well, it's not in the capital budget right now.
And you want to take it out of non-recurring, you said?
Yeah, well, we, we, we could actually leave that up to board finance.
But it, all I'm pointing out was, there was no line item for here now.
So you had eight sets coming in anyway, but because.
Yeah, that's true, the regular.
Six sets coming in now.
Six sets coming in now.
Yeah, but right now.
But what's driving the fourteen is that you're getting increased numbers of volunteers.
We have over, we have seventy-seven, seventy-eight active members now. Almost, well, yeah, but some of those are EMS, so we're, we're almost at ninety now. Okay, and like I said, in our first class, we had picked our own members, and this class now, we have another seven. So I have to find what, you know, once they get certified, I have to find what structural firefighter gear.
What's driving it, out of curiosity? Are you guys just promoting?
I, I think that, that myself, with the help of all the officers that I have with me, and on the company side, the board directors, I think that we're all working together and we've changed the culture at Bethel Fire. We had some other individuals that were there and left.
Great job.
It's going well. It's just unfortunately, I gotta ask for, for things that I didn't expect to act for. But it's a good thing to have to ask for, because like I said, we're, we're up in. I mean, a year ago, it would be tough to get one rig out. Now we've got people fighting to get to the third rig, get the third rig out on, on September. It's a team effort, and it's free, you know?
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, well, I just want to point out, I don't know, you have to, just the kind of wording of the board finance, that's all.
No, it's their discretion anyway, but. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this, but I, I'm. Before, before this goes to the board of finance, you know, at least two quotes, you know, at least let's give you a quote for fourteen, whatever discount you can get, lean on them. And if there's another vendor, you know, bring about them. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna trust you to come in with the lowest number you can get, as we have in the past.
The other vendors have been contacted, I'm just waiting for them.
Okay.
Actually, at the fire commission meeting, I think the, the motion was to we, we run it up to fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. I, I made it for the amount.
Okay.
Okay.
Not to exceed the sum up.
Yeah, I think the quote, the quote's good, I mean, the quote was.
All right.
It's rock solid. All right. All right, any other questions? All right, then I'll try your minds, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Thank you, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Let's see, next item is consideration of re-employment of the building official. Our building official under stake statute gets either a two- or four-year term of office and has to be reappointed. So we actually missed the date because I forgot about that. But Chris Baldwin, who came to us five years ago from town of New Fairfield, has done an awesome job with the department, and is also responsible for all the work that's been done on the online permitting system. It's really been a huge asset to the town. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we reappoint Christopher Baldwin as head of our building department, chief building official and director of the department for another four years. Okay, any discussion?
It's unbelievable, it's been five years now.
I know. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Now, on to this, I think this is our third discussion on consideration of the proposal for sustainable Bethel. I'd like to welcome Bill Craddy, who's chair of the Energy Committee, and Su, Sudiva. Bill Crady, who's chair of the energy committee, and Su, Sunita Melkani, who is the vice chair. Uh, now, as I, you guys have a copy of the, um, the proposal. And this actually wasn't my idea, this is, I wanna give credit for this idea to, uh, to Sunny and to Bill. Uh, and the basic premise is that we have an energy committee that has done great work. We were one of the first towns that had a municipal solar farm. Uh, they, they've come forward with a lot of good ideas, not all of them have been, we've been able to get through, like, uh, planning and zoning took exception to the idea of the solar parking lot, unfortunately. But, uh, they're working toward a, uh, microgrid at the police station and school complex. Uh, they, they were instrumental in getting solar put on the two renovated schools and the track and field center. But the, the, there is a greater opportunity here to tie into the sustainable, uh, CT program and give them actually more opportunities to do things that are very important to, uh, a lot of our residents. So I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Bill to kinda talk about his, uh, to Bill and Sunny to talk about their thinking on this, and in the meantime, I'm gonna bring up the sustainable CT website too, so you can see uh, kind of, uh, kinda what, what the possibilities are with this. So, uh, Bill, if you have any comments while I, while I get this going here?
Hey, well, one of the things that, that, uh, everybody should know that energy and sustainability are intertwined, which you can't separate up. And when you look at the projects we've done, if you take a look at, uh, energy, it's really a toolbox for sustainability, it's doing things if you're uh, building management systems, which we upgraded in all the town buildings to manage the use of energy to cut down and use when it's not needed. Uh, replacement of light bulbs or energy efficiency with, with LED reduced, that's an efficiency, energy efficiency manager. Uh, the solar is renewable energy, it's not energy efficiency, it's renewable energy. But all three of those are sustainability, they're all addressing the reduction of the dependence upon fossil fuels and other, uh, 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 thing that, that are, are a cause for the, for the, uh, you know, situation that turns the environment, the global warming. And that's a very big part of, of what's a sustainability is. Sustainability also includes other things such as, as recycling, uh, for a variety of things, recycle plastic, you reduce, uh, you reduce the demand for energy, you reduce the demand for oil, for example. So, all those things are there, we have, we have a project which we're starting now, which is working with, uh, PACE on the heat smart program, which is to, uh, the intention of the heat smart program is as we go down the future and, and the goal for the country is to get rid of fossil fuel oil and natural gas. Most of the houses in, in, in this town, uh, in all of Connecticut are heated by oil and natural gas. Uh, so what's a replacement for that are ground source heat pumps or air source heat pumps uh, that can eliminate the use of natural gas, whatever, so that is a, you know, a very basic sustainability, uh, measure. And what my suggestion is, is that, uh, the town should create a sustainability commission and fold the energy into that because energy is a toolbox for sustainability, that's what it is. And it can't be separated from it, so it's all one. And if we get, uh, in a sustainability commission, hopefully we get more people participating in this, uh, which can bring more ideas and more, uh, support, uh, to work. Uh, for sustainability, one of the factors, one of the objectives we have is to do a study of, of the, uh, fleet, town fleet compared to, to electric vehicle, EV vehicles. Also about maybe a downtown bus EV that can, that can be short-term driving people around, gets rid of auto emissions that cause carbon dioxide, you know, gas problems, I think. So all of those are sustainability, they're energy related, but like I say, energy, uh, and energy efficiency, energy management, or renewable energy are tools in the toolbox of sustainability and you can't separate them. They all have to, you know, in my opinion, they're all one entity. So I suggest that town create a sustainability commission and just fold the energy committee under that, I can get subcommittee or whatever. But that's, you know, the nature of it.
Thank you. Ian, could you, um, see the little, uh, black bar on the, on the right-hand side? If you can just minimize that so we can see the full screen. Yeah. Yeah, the, the one that shows the pictures.
Ah, in the middle, the one next to the blue one?
Go over to the, the little black box that says Brad's name, go over to the left of that, you see that you can minimize that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, right there. There we go. So, um, what I've done is, uh, I brought up the sustainable CT website so you can you can get an idea because there's, there's, it's packed with information. And one of the things I wanted to show you, certification program statistics. We are registered as a participating community, uh, about two, three years ago, we actually registered, I brought it to this, uh, to this, uh, board, to the board selectment. Uh, we officially approved a resolution that, that says we are, you know, interested in joining the sustainable CT program. So, when you see the, the number there, one hundred twenty-five total registered, that includes us. However, it, it didn't work, what I, what I did was I, I, it was, uh, I put together a group of department heads and assistants. So like, uh, the land use folks, somebody from public works who works on the cycling, David McCollum from inland wetland, and the, the problem is the staff is just overwhelmed with work and this is not something that they could do in their spare time. Kinda asking them to, you know, like to do volunteer work and they tried, they tried to do that, Janice Christianik was part of it too. Uh, so when I, I started looking around at other communities after Bill and Sunny and I spoke about this, and I found that this is a, a really outstanding way to get the community engagement because there's a tremendous amount of interest in, in serving on some of this, and just from word of mouth, I've had two or three people contact me out of the blue and say, hey, I heard you're working on a sustainability committee, please put my name in if you need volunteers, because I wanna work on it. So you can see that, uh, there's different levels. Under twenty-five registered, sixty-nine have reached the first level of certification, forty-two have reached the bronze level, twenty-seven have reached the silver level, so the more of the activities that you participate in and accomplish, you get points for these things and you get a, uh, you get a certification. So, I wanted to show you just a little bit of what this is about, I'm gonna go to actions and certifications. So if you, if you, I was popular guy. So if you, if you take a look at this, these are the, the broad areas of activity that are included in the sustainability effort. So you can, you can just read down this list, you'll see that, uh, renewable and efficient energy is item number seven. So, the way this works is that the committee will work on these things. And if you look over here at the, on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see, that's, it's kinda far away for, for us over here, especially with me with my cataract, but, uh, certification criteria. To reach the bronze level, you need to reach two hundred points. Now, if I, if I click on this thing, this, uh, click on renewable energy, benchmark and track energy use. You know, a lot of these things are easy to do, it just takes some volunteers some time to, like, spend a little bit of time in the finance department looking at the bills. And what it does is that it, it gives, gives our, gives them an idea of how much energy we use, how much we could save, how much we're saving through our different solar efforts, and then they publish that to community. So it costs nothing to do this. Achieve high energy performance for individual buildings. We've actually already done this through the, the AMRS code thing. Um, increase use of renewable energy in buildings. Again, uh, we've already done this, so we're, we're already well on the road to, to achieving these things. And it's something that, uh, if you look at these things, a, a sustainability committee can be, can divide itself into subcommittees to work on these things. You could have, like, a subcommittee of two or three working on these things simultaneously in a couple of different areas. One of the things I wanted to show you also is, uh, thriving economics, thriving local economics. We don't happen to have a problem with brownfield sites, but implementing sustainable purchasing. That's one of the things that's actually on our agenda later on tonight, and it's basically just, um, putting a policy in place that when we put things out for bid, we're gonna give preference to companies that, that, uh, that use renewable energy, you know, at the lowest possible price, it doesn't negate anything else we do. Uh, inventory and promote local retail options. Again, that's something that we're already doing through our economic development commission and we link uh, discover Bethel website to our own website. Uh, and we've also, uh, look at this one, provide resources and su- that supports local businesses. We just put together an ARPA plan, you know, for a, a grant program for local businesses. So, basically, this just gives us an opportunity at no cost to taxpayers to draw citizens into the program, work on these, make us aware of new opportunities, that's one of their things, even with tourism, uh, and promoting the town and really having a group that's gonna, like, the, by the way, uh, Sunny and Bill have, look for opportunities like heat smart, like the ever source light bulb program that can benefit the community and run these things. Now, the best part of this is, once you're certified as a, uh, as a, uh, sustainability committee through the program, you also become eligible for grant opportunities to pay for some of this stuff. So, this is, uh, this is kind of the broad outline of, of what I, uh, how I view this, um, committee working, another opportunity, um, land stewardship, natural resources, provide watershed education, that's something that we definitely need, and it's basically just publishing information to the community on the importance of, uh, maintaining clean waterways. Create a watershed management plan, this is something that we are actually starting to work on through inland wetlands, but, um, something that, that, that volunteers could work on, engage in watershed protection. And, uh, this is, this is definitely, uh, we, we, we've gotten word that the waterways that flow through McCower Park, for example, uh, are suffering from some degradation, it, it could be cleaned up by, by volunteers. So, this is, um, you know, uh, trail and trail maintenance at Park Park, or not Park Park, uh, front preserve, things like that, all part of it. So, um, we, uh, previously had a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, to move forward with the sustainable CT, uh, or sustain, sustainable Bethel proposal, which ties into this, again, includes energy, uh, they will keep doing the great things that they're doing and just, you know, add some other great things to it. Uh, the only question I have is, uh, A, will you support it, and B, is there seven people enough?
Yeah, your idea. But, you know, Bill, I, I was really wanted to talk to you about it because I know you go way back with energy, you're involved in the town. And I, I just thought this program was really too broad to cover all the, the items that were in there, you know, I think from, uh, energy to recycling and, and land use and Matt just mentioned waterways and stuff. Uh, you feel, and, and I heard your comments earlier that you support this. Did you feel that, you know, we can still maintain our energy, um, programs, the way you accelerated everything, you know, with the, uh, solar farms and all that, uh, you know, the, uh, other project up to this, uh, high school, uh, with the energy at the.
The track and field center?
No, the.
The micro grid.
The micro grid, you know, so you know, I, I, I know that, that alone takes a lot of time.
Well, it's gonna take some time, very definitely, but it is a piece of sustainability, you know, thing because, you know, the town's computer system is, it's opposed on how, you know, but I still, if we have a storm and we're out of power for two weeks and the generators don't work, you can't get fuel.
Well, I understand that, so I, you know, my main concern that this whole program was really, from here to there, was very broad.
Well, that's why we would be a subcommittee, we would focus on the energy. You'd need a bigger commission or a sustainability commission and you can have different focus groups within the sustainability.
Yeah, we could.
We would be the, the energy piece, and if one of the other groups needs some energy component, we're there to fill in, you know, and, and work together.
Oh, you know what, I wanted to hear those words, your lips, and I, I support them. You know, and that's, I just didn't wanna make sure that we were, I didn't want to think, I didn't want you to think that we were pushing you out the door, absolutely not, we can use all the help we can. All right, and, you know, you're comfortable with that?
And if I may add, I think first of all, congratulations on your reelection. And I think we have, we can do a lot of great things in the small town and really become a model town, I think, for what we can achieve. Just the access to like, someone like me to be sitting here with you is phenomenal and only happen in a very small town like ours. Um, one of the things we can do is the participation even in the energy committee has been a key point, uh, which is, it's pretty much been Bill driving a lot of things and I've been, I guess, a good, uh, second in the band and helping him out, but, uh, I think, uh, this committee will broaden, uh, and bring more participation, we already have volunteers running great things through social media to help local businesses. Um, and there was, I guess, a local cleanup effort done by someone else down the road from where I live. Uh, so there are a lot of things happening, I think, given this, uh, the umbrella of the town, I think will be, uh, great, that's one point I wanted to make, and the second thing is, um, if we could find a way to partner with the high school, uh, where the kids anyway have to choose capstone projects. And that way involve children, be- because it's their future we're talking about. Right from high school and if you could partner with them, then the participation, both from the children and the parents, I think, will help broaden this out and, and I think really kind of set us apart in terms of again making that model that, that we could be, so that, that's something if you agree, this probably something we could approach with the schools and drive it back.
You, you were thinking of the southern member?
Yeah. But, that could be expanded.
Yeah. We need to make it flexible, that, you know, we need to expand it, but again, if you get ten people and you go, you need a larger number for a quorum.
Yeah, right.
So that, you know, that, I don't want to get back in that old situation where you didn't have quorums on some gear.
Well, I think, energy is so narrow focused in people's mind, when you get the sustainability, you get other people that, you know, are gonna participate and, and, you know, get in there and, uh, prevent the not having a quorum.
What, what's your feeling on, uh, how many people should be on, on that board?
Seven, ten, five, you know, I mean, again, there's a lot of different areas to focus.
Fred, don't you think it should be on a self-conditioned basis? Because then it just addresses, uh, your concern about quorums. I'll just pick on one in particular. Uh, let's go to the recycling center, you know, I'm sure Bill does not wanna talk about trash. But you know what I mean, uh, you, I can recall we had a recycling committee here. They were very, very dedicated to that. And I can see where you have, uh, so-called subcommittees. That, that would work because I think anything, my experience has been if you get, get to seven, you never come to sometimes a quorum situation or a, a decision. And when you have five, you can usually come to a good decision. Uh, so you know, that's my thinking on it, but while you're talking, Bill, you, you got me thinking here, this is, while he's Mr. Energy here. You know, eventually, uh, I'd just like to throw this towards energy, towards you. Eventually, I want to say here in the town of Bethel, all non-highway vehicles and, and also throwing the park departments too. Should we be considering electric? And, and, you know, and, and because it, it's inevitable, it's going in that direction. But in advance to this, because I understand there are some costs for charging stations. Are there any grants that we can jump on right now to start setting up, whether it's our town garage or here in our lot here?
Yeah, there are, there are grants that, that are out there, one of the things we're looking into is, is to put an electric vehicle charging station over at the school park, for example. Or talking, that meant with, with, you know, with Tariot Ford of Ed. And they're looking at running a program to, to, uh, you know, talking to the bus company to, for, uh, EV buses. And, you know, that's another thing is, okay, where, where would you house these and charge them? Take a look at the school park, and there's a lot of land that's undeveloped there. Take a look at the school park. There's a lot of land that's undeveloped there. That could be developed for parking lot and solar and charging stations. Now there are companies that, um, come in and install the, the chargers and own and pay for them. And then you just pay for the power like you would. You know, it's not free. You don't want to give it away free.
Correct.
But there are different ways to do that. But we are looking at that now. As we are. We do have a proposal which we need to move forward is to, to do a study of the, of the vehicles, the town vehicles. One of this is police station, you know, the police vehicles. Now, we don't think that you're gonna go directly a hundred percent EV. You're gonna go with the hybrids.
Right.
For while, you know, type of the thing. But there are in the, in the state of Connecticut, there, there's school buses with solar on the top of the bus. And charging stations and, and, you know, they already running around doing that. But they're there and, and there's needs to, to, you know, to address that.
Yeah, that's, exactly. That, that's, that's my direction.
Yeah.
Right now.
So to your, to your question about, uh, how big it should be, I was thinking of a core of seven people. Because they would probably be able to draw volunteers in on specific projects related to the list.
Right.
And, you know, it, we, we could add, uh, ad hoc members for the way we do with the building committee, like for a particular project, let's say, some people who are just dedicated, dedicated to maybe revamping the recycling center or something.
Exactly.
But I, I thought seven was the right number to start with, to, to form the core committee.
Yeah. And we've got, for example, the heat smart program, we're sitting there, we've been given a grant with an approved grant. And our grant, soon as we get the town to sign an MOU.
Yeah.
You know, we can access the money and there's a time limit to get started on that program. We need to be moving. Because we're supposed to be up the ground, on the ground and running on January one, you know, we're closing in on it. But that's where it's, it's, it's managed by PACE, supported by EverSource. They're the ones that are providing the grant, a thousand dollar grant. And, and we've got, uh, players in there like we did with the solar, where we did have, uh, a solar company, you know, where there's two, there's the ground source E pump and an air source E pump. Company that has signed on that we won't, we don't recommend any particular. But we have meetings and presentations so people can understand what it's all about, what the economics are, and they can choose whoever they want to, to do the work if they want to do it. You know, they don't have to pick the two that we got. They can go wherever. We don't, we don't endorse any single one of them. We just en- endorse the, the initiative to, you know.
Form that direction.
Form that direction, yeah. But we need to get moving.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll totally agree.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve and move forward with the sustainable Bethel program as, as presented. Start looking for more volunteers. You have two right here. No, and I get one more.
You want to set the number for the committee or is that just?
It's, it's, it's in the proposal. It says seven.
That's okay. And, and, and we can modify that if we had.
Correct.
Yeah, they come back with.
Yeah, they, yeah, because this is gonna be a work in progress for a while.
It puts a pretty long list of items there. So, you know, you don't want to have people to burn out because I know how much time they spend just on the energy.
I know. Well, the, the thing about that menu is you don't have to do all of it. You pick and choose.
Well, you know, like you say, you get the volunteers. Or you, Bill said, Sonny said that, you know, you might get these other volunteers more interested in the recycling too.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Okay, uh, who seconded that?
Both of us.
All right.
Both of us.
They both seconded it. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? I'll try your minds. Those in favor of moving forward with sustainable Bethel, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Hey, I thank you very much. And, uh, Sonny and Bill, I appreciate you coming out tonight and, uh, your comments. I'll. Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just give us that one inside. I, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank, thank you so much. Yeah, I can see.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, consideration of uniform purchasing policy, which is kind of like right up the alley. That's the way. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Hearing, our comptroller.
Brad? Thank you, Matt. So this is a policy that we talked about like a month ago. That was recommended, recommended by the town auditor. Pretty much what he said to us, you need to add this policy and approve it. Otherwise I have to do a lot more work when I do the audit. Um, and it's all stuff we're supposed to be doing anyway, according to the state. It just is literally taking right from the state. If you look at it, it shows the sections two hundred dot three twenty to two hundred and three twenty-seven. So it's pretty much, we either need to do it or have the auditors do a lot more testing of our bidding.
That would fall right into what we just told the private purpose to do.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Right. Uh, does, does Joe give us a better price if we pass this?
I think it's the opposite. I think he gives us a worse price if we don't pass it.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah. Oh, that's what, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, more work, more testing.
Is there, is there any, okay, so we have to adopt the policy, but is there anything in here that, that we're not already doing? That is anything new?
I'm sure there are things like, one of the things they talk about is splitting up some projects to smaller projects so you can give it to minority businesses. Um, one possible. The hard part is a lot of our stuff, everything we bid out, it's the lowest qualified. And when you're trying to spend the taxpayers' dollars, you're always trying to spend the least amount of money as possible. We do go with local vendors. We do factor that when it's not just based on price. So there are some things we're doing. There's some things I'm sure we should be doing better. Once passed, it is something I'm gonna hand over to our purchasing agent and make sure she knows it inside and out.
What happens, you know, when we get a, a request and we waive the bid, does that create a problem here too?
Yep.
It can. It depends what it is. We still have, a lot of times you guys do some of the bid waivers because they're emergency. Or a lot of the stuff is state bid. So we just have to be careful with that.
Let me just throw out an example. Last month or two months ago, we talked about the fire truck. That we were waiving the bid because of a good price and this and that, and it was what they wanted. Would that, uh, throw up a red flag?
It could, except for the fact that that's local money. I think some of this talks about when it's federal or state money.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I, I talked to Brad about this and I also talked to the auditor too. And I read the section of the federal statutes. And that's what I got out of it too, that what it does is it's when we're gonna use federal monies or monies that come through the state as a result of that. And it does change our charter. I mean, there's no doubt about it that if you look on the last couple of pages, you'll see. You'll see that the, the different amounts, the different bids, they expect different things to be done. So if you want to use the federal money in the state, that's the impression I got. And that's what I was told by the auditor. You've got to follow this policy. Otherwise they can refuse to give us the money.
Is that affected, uh, the Recovery Act? Does that apply to Recovery Act money?
Should be all federal money.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
The Recovery Act, there's so, the guidance isn't there because they gave us the money and now they're trying to figure it out. So that, some of that stuff's gonna be hard to track down on. Um, but yeah, it is federal money. So it would, uh, count toward, you know.
Okay. So you've reviewed this, Marty?
Yeah. I, I don't think we got any, any real choice. You know, if you don't want to take federal money, that's fine. Don't vote for this.
Yeah.
If you want the federal money, and a lot of the money you think might be just be state, but that comes from the feds too, through the state. So it's tied in together.
The state is a pass through for a lot of money.
Right. And I, I think Brad is right. Our purchasing agent is just gonna have to familiarize herself with this to make sure that it all fits into the pattern of what it's supposed to be.
Yeah. And a lot of it talks about like, you're supposed to give preference to it. It doesn't mean you have to go with it. Like if you have a bid and the minority owned businesses twice the amount of the other person, you don't have to give it to them. It just means all things being equal, or if you're doing a bid that has a rubric to it, you would have to wait it. But that's, a lot of that stuff we've been doing, just not as formally. And this is just putting it in writing and making it stick to it.
All right. Well, all right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, ratify the proposed, uh, uniform policy, purchasing policy submitted today. All right, I'll second that. Um, so motion on the floor to, uh, to adopt the, uh, town of Bethel Uniform Guidance Purchasing Policy agenda is recommended by the finance department.
Supported by the town attorney.
It's supported by the town attorney. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor. Seconded or, or any further comments, questions? Anything, if you don't, Rich? Okay, I'll try your minds. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Brad. Uh, so last item on the agenda is, um, status update on the ARPA projects. And I'll leave the floor open to you.
I, I promised you guys I'd be at your first meeting of every month. Um, so here's your two minute update, maybe less. The Small Business Assistance Program, the deadline has passed. Uh, Janice had fifty-one applications. The total of those requests are two hundred and forty-seven thousand and some change. They have two subcommittees that are meeting tonight and tomorrow night. The score of the applications. She anticipates that possibly at your meeting in two weeks, they may have a better update for you on where that's at. So that's small business. Matt had touched on a little bit, the scanning. We are looking at a vendor that the state used, uh, to do scanning. We have a meeting with them next week to talk about all the, how it intertwines. We have prices, getting the price on just the scanning piece is pretty easy. The problem is, how do you go from the scanned document to it being usable for you? So we have a meeting with, uh, Scan Optics next week, uh, and they're gonna talk us through a little bit more of that. Cause we don't want to scan it and then find out later that you need to spend X a dollar, X amount of dollars more to actually be able to use it. The gym and locker rooms, well, the locker rooms and the front hall, we had Gordian come out last week or two weeks ago. They are working up a price for us. Once we have more information on that, we will, uh, be in a better spot with that. And with the Parloa, Eileen was working on getting a second vendor to give us a price on doing the full plans to, for it, to get to the point that we can bid it out. So, nothing major to report. We're not requesting any money at this point. Um, but we are moving along.
Okay. We have any questions for Brad? Yeah, uh, the, the discussion with, uh, the building committee, uh, I understand that the engineer is no longer around anymore and we might have to re-engineer the mechanicals for that. So there's, looks like there might be an extra cost involved there also again.
The, well, mechanical, that's.
The pressure for the, for the, uh, gym and locker room.
Yeah, so the company Gordian, they, um, they're pretty much project managing.
So what's that, Brad?
So Gordian, they, they're supposed to be all encompassing if you choose to use all the pieces of it. So we're kind of waiting to see what they come back with. Um, when we walked through the locker rooms with them. They had our plans that the architects had done. Um, and then we kind of looked at it as like, well, if you have a way that we could do this cheaper and still accomplish what we want to accomplish, come with ideas for us. So I'm kind of in waiting pattern to see what they come back with. I think Eileen and I have a meeting scheduled with them for next week. So we should have an update for our next ARPA update next month.
Is Nancy Ryan goes to those meetings? From the building committee?
Uh, she wasn't at that walkthrough. She was aware of it though.
Okay.
So.
I, I think you need to have the, uh, someone from the building committee involved there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause we, we assigned that formally.
Right.
The front end. Okay, yeah, got it. Now, I, I, I'm thrown, I'm just throwing out things. That's federal money that we're gonna be using. We use this one vendor?
It could be. They wanted the, the salesperson. That's not her official title, but she's the salesperson that came out to the project. Said that they've done other ARPA projects and it's not a problem. And because there, it was bid through like the COGS, you don't have to. They're aware that it may be an issue. If their price is crazy and we're not going with them, I didn't want to dig too deep into whether or not we could use them anyway.
Yeah, all right. But just long as you covered all the bases.
Yeah, we're aware of it. We're having the same issue with the scanning. Because the ARPA funds make you bid anything over seventy-five thousand. Obviously by charter, we have to bid over fifty. But we do have a little room in there between the fifty and seventy-five for bid waivers. And the scanning's probably gonna be more than that unless we break it into pieces. So there's a lot of moving parts on this, Rich, which is frustrating, but.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, I don't want to get down the road and then we find out we have a problem.
No, I, me neither.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
The last meeting, I think the Board of Selectmen talked about the possibility of having a, uh, for lack of a better word or words, I'm gonna say, a clerk of the works for construction matters. And I, I gotta tell you, based on what I saw in, in all the years that we've all been involved with the town, the construction. This past year with the owner's rep that they hired with the schools, I think it paid off in, in absolutely phenomenal, I think, anyway. The projects. And I think that's something that should be considered like for the, for the project in the hallway there and, and also a mech hour. Not mech hour, a Parloa field. You know, I'm, the stuff now, but for construction stuff, I think it should be considered.
Yeah, we do.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Marty, that, that project at the school really, uh, ran smooth with the owner's rep there. They couldn't, the committee couldn't do that by themselves.
Right, absolutely.
The purchasing agent, myself and Matt have a meeting tomorrow. She's been doing a lot of work. I'm trying to put in our PR Q together for it. She's having a little difficulty with it because it's hard to bid something that's wide range. It's not a specific project. Um, so we're trying to work through some of that. Uh, I think the town, uh, Director of Public Works is gonna be involved too. And then we're trying to iron out some of those details so we can bid it like we did. When we went out and got the engineering services for Wright Pierce, which, uh, you gentlemen are involved with, you see a lot. And you've seen how beneficial that's been having Marius.
Yeah.
So we're looking for a similar relationship just with a owner's rep or a project management company.
That's the word, project management company.
Yeah.
They are, they just give you a, a naming list of how much for, you know, each person and, you know, kind of like what the engineers do.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to get. But it's, it's hard to write a spec for a bid and list out all the different kind of things you want. So she's working through that. I know we spoke, spoke to the city of Danbury, because they just did something similar, but for architectural. So she's adopted some of the stuff from that and we're trying to twist it to what we want it to be. So.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Brad. Thanks for being on tonight, Marty. I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Okay, moved by Paul, seconded by Rich. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. We are adjourned and we shall stop recording. Have a good night.
Good night. Night.